...leading to enacting procedures for conducting meetings and hearings of the town board. On the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Muscarrello, seconded by Councilor McInerney. On the vote, Supervisor Vendetta?
Vote aye.
Councilor Muscarrello?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Vote aye.
Aye. Councilor Muscarrello?
Aye.
Councilor McInerney?
Aye.
Councilor Koshigano?
Aye.
Councilor Pinto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lesion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Motion to suspend the rules of the procedures and add walk-on resolution number 184 passes with seven ayes. May I have a motion to adopt walk-on resolution number 184? On the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor Muscarrello, seconded by Councilor McInerney.
Before you vote, gentlemen, we explain it.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, basically, we're going to be voting on rules of decorum for town board hearings. If there's a public hearing, speakers other than the applicant or his attorneys shall get five minutes to address the board on that specific matter pertaining to the public hearing before yielding to the next speaker. Resolutions, the public will have three minutes to address the board on any given resolution, a total of six minutes for two resolutions, and a total of ten minutes if the speaker's addressing three or more resolutions. On the public comment, the speaker shall have five minutes to address the board on public comment. There will be no political speak, no accusations. The speaker will speak to the town board. May I have your care? Our way match coming up. I have a chart here. We're allowing five minutes on the public comments. Other municipalities, Glencov, North Hempstead, Hempstead, Huntington, Long Beach, and Babylon allow three minutes each.
That's correct. And for the record, Matthew Rose, Assistant Town Attorney. Good morning, Supervisor, members of the board.
Good morning, ma'am.
So that the record's complete, I'll read the resolution into the record.
Go ahead.
Whereas it is desirable to enact procedures for conducting meetings and hearings of the town board, now therefore be it resolved that the town board of the town of Oyster Bay does hereby designate the following official rules of procedure pursuant to New York Town Law Section 63, and subject to other provisions of the New York Town Law and the Town Code of the town of Oyster Bay, the following rules of procedure are adopted and shall govern the meetings of the town board of the town of Oyster Bay. Part A, Interaction with Law, Section 1. These procedures are to be interpreted as supplementing and not replacing prior legislative enactments applicable to town operations in the conduct of town board meetings. Such legislative enactments include statutes, rules, and regulations of the state of New York and the Town Code of the town of Oyster Bay. Section 2. Nothing in these procedures shall be construed as expanding, reducing, or limiting the powers or rights specifically granted by law to any member, nor shall these procedures be construed as altering the number of votes specifically required by law for the taking of official action. Part B, Town Attorney as Parliamentarian. Section 1. Questions regarding the interpretation of these procedures which arise during a meeting of the board shall be decided by the town attorney who shall act as parliamentarian. Section 2. Decisions of the town attorney made pursuant to Part B, Section 1 hereof, may be appealed to the full board by motion of any member. Section 3. Robert's Rules of Order shall control the procedure of all meetings of the board to the extent that Robert's Rules of Order are not inconsistent with these procedures. Part C, Meetings, Section 1, Regular Meetings. The town board generally will hold regular meetings on two Tuesdays each month, with the exception of the months of August, October, and December, when only one regular meeting will be scheduled. Such regular meetings shall commence at 10:00 a.m., except for the second meeting of the month of March and the second meeting of the month of June, which meetings shall commence at 8:00 p.m., and all meetings shall be conducted in the boardroom at Town Hall. The regular meetings scheduled for the month of October shall commence at 10:00 a.m., and that meeting shall be continued until 7:00 p.m. that evening to allow for maximum public participation. At the discretion of the town board, the location of regular meetings may be changed to accommodate anticipated larger audiences than the boardroom can accommodate. Any deviation from this schedule shall be determined by the town board. Section 2, Special Meetings. Special meetings of the town board are those board meetings other than regular meetings. A special meeting may be called by the supervisor or by the written request of two board members by giving at least two days' notice in writing to members of the town board of the time when and the place where the meeting is to be held in accordance with New York State Town Law Section 62. Section 3, Executive Sessions. Executive sessions shall be held in accordance with New York State Public Officers' Law Section 105. All executive sessions shall be commenced during a public meeting. Part D, Policies, Section 1, Quorum. A quorum of the town board shall be required to conduct business. A quorum of the seven-member board shall be four. Section 2, Agendas. The agenda shall be prepared by the Office of the Town Attorney, Division of Legislative Affairs, in cooperation with the town clerk by Friday preceding the Tuesday meeting. An item may be placed on the agenda at any time, including during the meeting, by consent of a majority of the town board. Section 3, Voting. Pursuant to New York State Town Law, each member of the town board shall have one vote. Supervisor may vote on any matter. The vote upon every question shall be taken by the supervisor voting first, and then by each councilperson voting in order of seniority. Each board member may vote aye, no, abstain, pass his or her vote, or recuse himself or herself. Section 4, Order of Business. The order of business shall be called to order, roll call, pledge of allegiance, citations of public service announcements, public hearings, resolutions, including an opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only, adjournment, an opportunity for the public to address the board. The order of business may not be followed if the supervisor, as presiding officer, determines that it is appropriate to deviate. Section 5, Minutes. Minutes at all town board meetings shall be the responsibility of the town clerk, who pursuant to approval from the town board, may employ the services of a person to take minutes. Minutes of an open meeting shall consist of a record or summary of all motions, proposals, resolutions, and any other matter formally voted upon by the vote thereon. Minutes of an executive session shall be taken of any action that is taken by formal vote and shall consist of a record or summary of the final determination of such action and the vote thereon, provided, however, that such summary need not include any matter which is not required to be made public by the New York State Freedom of Information law. Minutes need not contain a summary of the discussion leading to action taken or include verbatim comments unless a majority of the board resolves to have the clerk do so. Part E, Rules and Procedures. Section 1, General Rules of Procedure. The supervisor shall provide meetings of the town board. In the supervisor's absence, the senior councilperson shall preside. There is no limit to the number of times a town board member may speak on a question. Motion to close or limit debate may be entertained but shall require the affirmative vote of four members of the board. Section 2, Guidelines for Public Comment. The public shall be allowed to speak only during public hearings and public comment periods. General Requirements. Each speaker will submit his/her name and address upon a form to be provided by the town clerk or his or her designate. On such form, the speaker shall also provide the resolutions he or she wishes to comment on or a brief description of what he or she will comment upon prior to speaking. Speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer and shall be called to speak in the order determined by the presiding officer. Speakers must step to the front of the room and speak into the microphone at the lectern. Speakers are not to approach the dais without invitation and are directed to make their remarks from the lectern. No items or documents may be placed on the dais or presented to the board unless either authorization is requested and granted by the presiding officer or a board member specifically requests to see an item. All items for presentation that are granted authorization or requested by a board member shall be presented to the town clerk, who shall pass it to the board. Speaker's remarks shall be addressed to the board as a body and not to any specific member thereof. Speakers shall observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, dignity, and good taste, and shall not use foul language, display unacceptable behavior, or be disruptive of the proceedings. Members of the public and board members shall be allowed to state their positions in an atmosphere free of slander, threats of violence, or the use of the board meeting as a forum for politics. Sufficient warnings may be given by the board at any time during a speaker's remarks, and, in the event that any individual shall violate the rules of decorum heretofore set forth, the presiding officer may then cut off comment or debate. Any person making offensive, insulting, threatening, insolent, slanderous, or obscene remarks, or who becomes boisterous, or who makes threats against any person or against public order and security while in the boardroom, shall be forthwith removed at the discretion of the presiding officer unless permission to continue is granted by the majority vote of the board members present. Public Hearings. Speakers other than the applicant or its attorneys or experts shall have five minutes to address the board on the specific matter that is the subject of the public hearing before yielding to the next speaker. Speakers may once again address the board during public hearing period for one additional five-minute period, but only to rebut statements made by the board or other speakers in regards to the matter that is the subject of the public hearing. Resolutions. During the period identified as opportunity for the public to address the board on agenda items only, speakers shall identify all resolutions they wish to speak on. Speakers shall have three minutes to address the board on any given resolution, a total of six minutes if the speaker is addressing two resolutions, and a total of ten minutes if the speaker is addressing three or more resolutions. A timer shall be utilized that will beep or produce another sound to indicate that a speaker's time limit for addressing agenda items has been reached. Upon being notified that his or her time limit has been reached, a speaker shall cease speaking, leave the lectern, and return to his or her seat. The presiding officer may modify these guidelines if warranted. Public Comment. During the period identified as opportunity for the public to address the board, speakers shall have five minutes to address the board before yielding to the next speaker. Board members may interrupt a speaker during the speaker's remarks, but only for the purpose of asking questions of the speaker for purposes of clarification, information, or to ask follow-up questions. All remarks shall be addressed to the supervisor and the town board. Board members may respond to questions or comments at their discretion. A timer shall be utilized that will beep or produce another sound to indicate that a speaker's five-minute time limit for public comment has been reached. Upon being notified that his or her time limit has been reached, a speaker shall cease speaking, leave the lectern, and return to his or her seat. The presiding officer may modify these guidelines if warranted. Section 3, Use of Recording Equipment. All members of the public and all public officials are allowed to photograph, entape, or video-record public meetings so long as the photography or recording is done in a manner which does not interfere with the meeting. The presiding officer may make the determination that the photography or recording is being done in a manner that interferes with the meeting after taking into consideration attendant movement and activity, distance from the deliberations of the board, noise, size of equipment, ability of the public to participate in the meeting notwithstanding the photography or recording, and any other pertinent factor. If the presiding officer makes the determination that the photography or recording is interfering with the meeting, the presiding officer may request an accommodation to avoid interference, and if not sufficient or complied with, order the photography or recording to be stopped. And Section 4, Executive Session Policy. It is the policy of the town board to conduct town business in an open fashion and to make available as much information as may be legally and practically be disseminated. The New York Open Meetings Law authorizes the board to conduct business in executive session in a number of areas. These include, 1, matters which will imperil the public safety if disclosed; 2, matters which may disclose the identity of a law enforcement agent or informer; 3, information relating to criminal investigations which would imperil effective law enforcement if disclosed; 4, discussions relating to proposed, pending, or current litigation; 5, collective bargaining negotiations; 6, personnel matters relating to particular individuals; and 7, the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property or securities when disclosure would substantially affect the value. The board recognizes that it is authorized to use executive sessions in these and other situations, but will do so with restraint. To maintain confidentiality and to encourage the uninhibited discussion of the subject matter in executive session, all statements made and positions taken by all participants must remain confidential and may not be disclosed by any participant unless and until disclosure of such information as may be legally disseminated as authorized by the affirmative vote of four members of the board. It has been, and continues to be, the practice of the board that all members of the board, acting together, come to agreement by consensus on the specific information which is to be released to the public in accordance with the New York Open Meetings Law, the suitable vehicle for reporting that information, and the timing of reporting.
Motion made by Councilor Muscarrello, seconded by Councilor McInerney. On the vote, Supervisor Vendetta?
On the one hand, for...
You get to address it?
All of the time that I've been sitting on the board, I have advocated rather spreadlessly, as popularly referred to as the egg timer. Most of the years that the town of Oyster Bay never implemented that in practice. On the other hand, unfortunately, the time may, I understood the word "may," may have come at its necessary to do so here in the town of Oyster Bay, and as it has been done across the length and breadth of so many municipalities on both ends. So, I understand Pat for now, and I'll go.
Councilor Muscarrello?
Vote aye.
Councilor McInerney?
Aye.
Councilman Koshigano?
Aye.
Councilwoman Pinto?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lesion?
Aye.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Aye.
Motion to adopt walk-on resolution number 184, passes with six ayes and one aye.
This will be effective immediately pertaining to this meeting, in all means. Pass for him.
She drew it out. She drew it out.
All right, Mr. Ralph Dollar, if you would... Hearing, Hydrant Rental, to consider the 2016 Hydrant Rental contract for the Oyster Bay, Board of District.
All right, yeah, Mr. McInerney, I know the... I don't know why these abuse me over here.
Vote aye.
My tape is on, on this thing.
I think the idea they were referring to is this dais, not the podium.
It's okay to put them in?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Hi, my name's Robert Rippe, I'm from Massapequa, New York. 155? Sure. Actually, I could ask you 155 and 156 together if you don't mind. I was wondering, is there any public input into choosing the people for these positions? I think it's well within the discretion of the department to do this, so I'm not aware of any... I'd have to check with, I guess, the deputies over there in charge to find out exactly the process, but if it comes on, they have pretty firm recommendations, quite familiar with the personnel involved. 158 is a resolution pertaining to special consulting services in connection with contract, but the proposed resolution wasn't available on the internet. Is there a reason why it wasn't available on the internet?
What's the... What reso is it? 158?
158. Actually, I think there were two that... Also, Resolution 176, that wasn't available in the proposed resolutions either on the internet.
So you would have to answer us to why they weren't on the... They were both being drafted.
Okay. Can you explain 158, special consulting services? Can you tell me what that contract's for?
Somebody want to take us through it?
Supervisor, it's just for a variety of services that Kansas Spindelli provides to what the Department of Environmental Resources, and they have in relation to some applications of a variety of things, which, John, could be more specific, but they have been for a number of reasons providing those services and continue to do so.
Isn't the resolutions, they are all available?
Yes.
The resolution was clear, but it wasn't available for me to read.
Oh, I apologize. Would you like a copy of it now?
No, if it's up there now, I'll get it when I go home. It would be better if you had it before you voted on, if I knew what was going on. 160, could you just tell me, I'm just curious, what the knolls, the knolls of Massapequa are? I understand they're in Locust Valley, but can you explain to me, is that a road or is that a... An area of land? What exactly is the knolls?
It's a neighborhood, it's a road.
It's a road? Thank you very much. 172. I'm curious, is this consulting services that are done here in relation to the Syosset, this is the Syosset landfill, I believe? Are the results, are the results of this going to be made public? And I'm curious, are these results being used in the Syosset Park? In other words, what I would like to know is, are these independent results that the town has ordered, or rather, independent testing that the town has requested, or for this particular area, because I know it's involved in the Syosset Park proposal, but is the DC doing their own separate, independent environmental consulting on this, or are we doing it for them? How's that working? Well, I think this is, John, you could probably help me, but I think this is part of ongoing...
Right, this resolution is for LKV, who monitors the landfill, the government's management, the consulting engine that does that work. And that's required, it's a former city like that, so it's always got to be monitored.
Excuse me, Rob, I don't want to interrupt it. This has been ongoing for how long?
Yeah, since the landfill, its first...
I just have one last question regarding the resolution and the landfill. There's a piece of property between the Syosset landfill and the old Sierra Wire site that Bill's Towing is operating out of. These tests have nothing to do with that property, right? That's a... Is that a Nassau County property? That's not town of Oyster Bay property, right? Look, I believe it's town of Oyster Bay, it contains property, but has nothing to do with this test. That's my understanding, am I right, Mike? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I say, I believe it's town of Oyster Bay property, but it's not within the scope of the property under the resolution that you just talked about. It's not part of the testing, I don't believe. Would that property require separate testing, then? I don't know if it's subject to any testing or not, it requires it, but I don't know the answer to that. Obviously, this property is all by the town, it's not part of the resolution or discussion. Are there any other separate rules or regulations that are in effect that govern anything happening on that property? I think that would be...
Well, and if you've talked about these Syosset application...
I was just talking, actually, if I had permission, I could pass up a map, or I could show you a map. It's circled right there. See this area here? It's operated by a company called Bill's Towing, they run some sort of police impound lot out of there, and I just did some brief research, and it shows that it's owned by Nassau County. I'm not sure if it is or if it isn't yet, but it's right in the middle of, you know, the proposed Syosset Park deal, so I'm curious, if it is town property, would the environmental testing that's being done encompass that area also?
For the resolution, the resolution is only for the landfill, which does not extend to this suburb.
Okay, thank you.
And testing will be done on that property, maybe occurring now in connection with...
Thank you very much. But there's nothing in effect now. Did I misspeak? Bless you, whoever that was, all these things. Did I misspeak? Is the property all by the town or the county? It's all by the town.
I went on the town website, and it does indicate that it's all by the county, and I think that must be without question, because it was part of the landfill.
I looked on the town website, and it's indicated that it's owned by the county.
Right.
Just on 184, I'm sorry, but I believe that my own government here is anything but transparent. I don't agree with cutting down the time for speakers. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you. All right, well, thank you very much.
All right, resos...
Good afternoon, Rob. Good afternoon, Mr. McInerney, good afternoon, Supervisor, and Board. Just before I saw them, I just want to step back to the resolutions one second, because I just want to bring to your attention that you voted on and passed two resolutions that were not made available to the public. I checked late last night, and I didn't see them. And then, at the end of the resolution period, there was a Resolution 120-216 that I specifically wanted to address two meetings ago. I think it was maybe one meeting, two meetings, but it was tabled. And then, after the resolutions were done today, you went, you untabled, you retabled it, and you passed it without anybody being able to speak about it, without anything. Nobody even knows what it was about now. It's a resolution that was tabled more than a meeting ago, and now today that I voted on without anyone being able to talk about it. I don't think that's correct. I don't know, I had asked a couple of questions in the past, I don't know if your answers are going to run into my allotted five minutes now. I asked you last couple of meetings for an explanation on what happened with SRV and the HVAC, the settlement of the 350-odd thousand dollars, and then the replacement of that air conditioning electric system. I was hoping you'd be able to give me some answers on that today. I don't know if anyone is available, unfortunately. I think someone has prepared to address it, but it's not available, so we'll have to wait till next time. Would you be able to tell me who that would have been that would have adjusted? The town mayor, am I wrong about that? The town mayor. And I had asked, were you able to find out when the asbestos that was identified in the Litauer Estate farm prior to the purchase, when that was removed from the estate? Maybe you have an answer? Make it short, make it clear.
Okay. There was asbestos that was found and removed from the boiler area in the main house, which was removed. And there was also asbestos that was removed from the cottage at the same time when there was boiler repair stuff.
When is the question? What were the dates of that?
Within the last two or three years.
I'm sorry, can you be a little more specific than that?
Within the last two or three years. I could get a better date for you, but that's...
I appreciate if you could get the exact dates.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much. The last thing we spoke about was, the last prior question was, we were talking about the Winter Brothers Garbage Service, and I was curious why Winter Brothers didn't have to follow through on their permitted obligations and handle the recycling in my neighborhood. I brought it up to your attention last meeting, and I just wanted to make you aware that I was able to acquire a copy of the contract, not the private sanitation pickup contract, but DPW-09-999, which is the 100 billion dollar contract that you renewed the second portion on February 23rd, rather, with Winter Brothers for solid waste disposal. And just to bring to your attention, on page 11-3, paragraph 2, Recycling Programs, it explains that, Article 6 of Chapter 201 of the Town Code requires all owners and occupants of private residences, apartment complexes, and condominiums within the unincorporated town, except those within the sanitary district of Syosset and parts of Massapequa, which use private carters for recyclable collection, to participate in the town's recycling program. So, the answer to my question, why Winter Brothers doesn't do the recycling in my neighborhood, is because the town has a contract with them that explains that they're supposed to be
I think that must be, you know, mistaken, because it was part of the landfill.
I looked on the Town website, and it's indicated that it's owned by the county. Just on 184, I'm sorry, but I believe that my own government here is anything but transparent. I don't agree with cutting down the time of speakers. That's all I have to say on that. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. All your resos?
Good afternoon, Mr. Supervisor and Board. Just before I saw him, I just want to step back to the resolutions for one second, because I just want to bring to your attention that you voted on and passed two resolutions that were not made available to the public. I checked late last night, and I didn't see them. And then, at the end of the resolution period, there was a Resolution 120-216 that I specifically wanted to address two meetings ago. I think it was maybe one meeting, two meetings, but it was tabled. And then, after the resolutions were done today, you went, you untabled, you retabled it, and you passed it without anybody being able to speak about it, without anything. Nobody even knows what it was about now. It's a resolution that was tabled more than a meeting ago, and now today that I voted on without anyone, without anyone being able to talk about it. I don't think that's correct. I don't know. I had asked a couple of questions in the past. I don't know if your answers are going to run into my allotted five minutes now. I asked you last couple of meetings for an explanation on what happened with SRV and the HVAC, the settlement of the three hundred and fifty-odd thousand dollars, and then the replacement of that air conditioning electric system. I was hoping you'd be able to give me some answers on that today.
I don't know if any word is available, unfortunately. We don't, I think someone had it prepared to address it, but it's not available, so we'll have to wait till next time.
Would you be able to tell me who that would have been that would have adjusted?
The Town Mayor. Am I wrong about the answer? The Town Mayor.
Okay. And I had asked, were you able to find out when the asbestos that was identified in the Litauer Estate farm prior to the purchase, when that was removed from the estate?
Maybe, I'm interested. Make it short, make it clear.
Okay. There was asbestos that was, that was found and removed from the boiler area in the main house, which was removed, and there was also asbestos that was removed from the cottage at the same time when there was boiler repair stuff.
No way, because I think that's...
When is the question? What were the dates of that?
Within the last two or three years.
I'm sorry. Can you be more specific than that?
Within the last two or three years. I could get a better date for you, but that's...
I appreciate if you get the exact dates.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much. The last thing we spoke about was, the last prior question was, we were talking about the Winter Brothers Garbage Service, and I was curious why Winter Brothers didn't have to follow through on their permitted obligations and handle the recycling in my neighborhood. I brought it up to your attention last meeting, and I just wanted to make you aware that I was able to acquire a copy of the contract, not the private sanitation pickup contract, but DPW-09-999, which is the fifty, or a hundred million dollar contract that you renewed the second portion on February third, twenty-third, rather, with Winter Brothers for the solid waste disposal. And just to bring to your attention, on page 11-3, paragraph two, recycling programs, it explains that, "Audible six of chapter two-one of the Town Code requires all owners and occupants of private residences, apartment complexes, and condominiums within the unincorporated town, except those within the sanitary district of Syosset and parts of Massapequa, which use private carders for recyclable collection, to participate in the town's recycling program." So, the answer to my question, why Winter Brothers doesn't do the recycling in my neighborhood, is because the Town has a contract with them that explains that they're supposed to be a private company doing it in my neighborhood. The private company that picks up the garbage in my neighbors is Winter Brothers. They don't do it. I understand that it would be ineffective cost-wise for them to do it, but they should be doing it, but they're not doing it. The other question I wanted to ask you in regards to this particular contract, I asked you on February twenty-third if the Town Board was just going to approve a fifty million dollar extension on the contract without doing any further investigation or anything. In reading the contract, I've come to learn that there are many specific obligations that the contractor, Winter Brothers, has. They're supposed to maintain the transfer station, they were required to photograph, videotape, otherwise document the condition of the transfer station, they're supposed to, they're supposed to do constant, like, capital improvement work, and my question is, the Town also, excuse me, the contractor shall maintain a field office and pay for the utilities, so I'd like to know if the contractor is paying their share of the utilities at the dump station where they're, where they're supposed to maintain a field office, In some instances, the contractor may require from the Town that Town personnel work beyond their normal working hours, and then the Town contractor is supposed to pay the overtime, okay? So, I'd like to know how many times that's happened, how much overtime the contractor has paid the Town employees. They're also supposed to provide necessary dedicated personnel, maintain the transfer station facility on the rolling stock, they're supposed to have somebody working there all the time, and now, the Town has the right to inspect the transfer station, the disposal facilities, at its option, it can inspect the proposed disposal facility, the intermediate transfer facility, the composting facility, the material recovery facility. So, my question is, before you approved that fifty million dollar contract a couple months ago, did anybody do any of this?
Yeah, well, obviously, the contract is administered by, I would say, a significant number of people who work in various layers, consultants, engineers, and DPW personnel. So, we'll take all the questions on the revisment, and we'll do the best we can to get answers next time around, and for now, time is up, and we'll look forward to seeing you.
Sorry, I have a couple more questions. I don't think I got as many as everybody else.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for participating in the Town Government's forty.
Wow.
All right, Tom, good luck to you.
Huh? Oh, they timed it. I didn't even get five minutes. They timed it.
No, you got five minutes, you can get over the five minutes. Other people, I think, got over five minutes.
And then we stop when they respond, and then we start.
They should be stopped.
Okay.